Mayor, I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for July 8th, 2021, to order at 6:48 PM. On roll call, council members Ballistriari-
Here.
Fakori-
Here.
Fasolo-
Here.
Golebeck-
Here.
Pellegrine-
Here.
Council President Wetchler-
Here.
Mayor Coletti-
Here.
We have a quorum, and just for the record, Councilman Fasolo is participating via teleconference.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, our councilman is with us this evening via the phone, and he's in Italy, having a great time, I hope. We're over here, just so you know, that we're being poured on, torrential rains. And we still have some people in the audience. Welcome. Mike, how did we fare with the town today, with all the rains?
Good today, not so good the other day. We had 37 trees down, which the DPW, police, fire, EMS, everybody did a great job. We all came together. No one got hurt, and the roads are all open.
Good, good. That's good news. All right, we've got a pretty inundated agenda here this evening, so let's get started. Would everybody please rise for a prayer and flag salute? Oh, God, our Father, we ask you to bless our meeting, which we entrust to your fatherly care and protection. Please remove all selfishness and prejudice from our heart, and implant therein a keen sense of justice and a greater love for you and our neighbors. Guide us in our deliberations, so that our decisions will always please you. Bring your peace and happiness to our community. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that that meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing a special notice in the record in Herald News and by posting such notice in the office of the borough clerk, as well as in public places within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Said notice was first posted and transmitted on January 29th, 2021, and published on July 2nd, 2021. It was then updated and reposted and transmitted on July 1st, 2021, and published on July 6th, 2021. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. First on the agenda this evening, we have our Green Acres Grant Application Resolution and Public Hearing. So with that being said, I'll read Resolution R-243-21, State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Enabling Resolution. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program State provides loans and/or grants to municipal and county governments, and grants to nonprofit organizations for assistance in the acquisition, development, and stewardship of lands for outdoor recreation and conservation purposes. And whereas the Borough of Elmwood Park desires to further the public interest by obtaining funding in the amount of $500,000 in the form of a $500,000 matching grant, and if available, a $0 loan from the state to fund the following projects: Elmwood Park Borough Park Improvement Project at a cost of $2,094,967. Now therefore be resolved that the Borough Council of the Borough of Elmwood Park resolves that Robert Coletti, or the successor to the Office of Mayor, is hereby authorized to make application for such a loan and/or such a grant, provide additional application information, and furnish such documents as may be required, and C, act as the authorized correspondent of the above-named applicant. Whereas the state shall determine if the application is complete and in conformance with the scope and intent of the Green Acres Program, and notify the applicant of the amount of the funding award. And whereas the applicant is willing to use the state's funds in accordance with such rules, regulations, and applicable statutes, and is willing to enter an agreement with the state for the above-named project. Now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Elmwood Park that the mayor of the above-named body or board is hereby authorized to execute an agreement and any amendment thereto with the state known as the Elmwood Park Borough Park Improvement Project, that the applicant has its matching share of the project, if a match is required, in the amount of $1,594,967, that in the event the state's funds are less than the total project cost specified above, the applicant has the balance of funding necessary to complete the project, that the applicant agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations in its performance of the project, and that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Erin, this just takes one reading? Not typical of an ordinance?
Correct, just one reading, Mayor. It's a resolution, and we do need a brief explanation of the project prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Mike, would you care to break this down for our public?
Yes, Mayor. The council has decided that they wanted to make improvements to Borough Field, specifically the Major League Baseball field, which has been, you know, in disrepair for many years, very difficult to maintain. So we applied for this grant, and we are hoping that it'll take us beyond that field, and hopefully other areas of Borough Field, to enhance the playability for the youth of our community. And we're also seeking another grant to help offset the cost of this project.
Mike, the scope of work there would be what? Are we talking turf field?
Yes, turf field, at least for the Major League Field, and beyond if we could get there.
Thank you. In terms of cost factor, maybe Daniel, I know you were involved with this, can you tell us what the ratio is? Is it matching dollars? Is it 100% grant?
Yeah, I mean, the engineer who could speak to this better, I think their rough estimate was like 1.6 when he comes. Open space, we ask for 500 grand, and here you need to commit, you get 25%, so we're saying 2 million to be able to get 500,000. So under the roseous scenario, we get 1 million; worst-case scenario, maybe 600,000.
So it's 25% Green Acres and 75% the town?
Correct. That's a separate grant. An open space will give you a certain amount. We asked for 500, and you have to put up at least that much in matching out of your own pocket.
Right.
Same thing we did for the Marina, we applied for both.
Okay, okay, thank you. May I have a motion to open to the public? Anyone from the public here to speak on this hearing application? If not, I will close the public portion. May I have a motion on the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
First by Wetchler, second by Pellegrine. On roll call, council members Ballistriari-
Yes.
Fakori-
Yes.
Fasolo-
Yes.
Golebeck-
Yes.
Pellegrine-
Yes.
Council President Wetchler. Motion carries.
Moving on?
Okay, Mayor. Moving on to our consent agenda, R-244-21, Approval to Submit a Grant Application and Execute a Grant Contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for Funding from the Fiscal Year 2022 Municipal Aid Program for the Grove Street Improvements Project, R-245-21, Appointment of Recreation Staff for the 2021 Summer Program Recreation Department, R-246-21, Appointment of Recreation Staff for the 2021 Summer Program Recreation Department, R-247-21, Award Proposal for Design Services Alamo Group Basketball Court Improvements, R-248-21, Accepting Funds and Approving Participation with the State of New Jersey's SFY 21 Bodyborne Camera Grant Program administered by the Department of Law and Public Safety, Office of the Attorney General, R-249-21, Authorized Purchase of Equipment Police Department, R-250-21, Authorized Purchase of Vehicles Police Department, and R-251-21, Resolution to Approve the Consent Agenda.
Motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll?
On roll call, council members Ballistriari-
I recuse on R-248-21, 249-21, and 250-21, yes on the rest.
Fakori-
Yes.
Fasolo-
Yes.
Golebeck-
Yes.
Pellegrine-
Yes.
Council President Wetchler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. So I think it's appropriate at this point to call for motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Mayor, I'd like to call to order the Work Session Meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for July 8th, 2021, to order at 7:00 PM. On roll call, council members Ballistriari-
Here.
Fakori-
Yes.
Fasolo-
Here.
Golebeck-
Here.
Pellegrine-
Here.
Council President Wetchler-
Here.
Mayor Coletti-
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Once again, welcome. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met and published in an annual notice in the record in Herald News of Woodland Park, and by posting such notice in the office of the borough clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8th, 2021, and published on January 13th, 2021. Would anyone from the public care to be heard at this point? Mr. Freitag?
Jeff, you're Freitag, 35, 36, 37. Um, I noticed there are a couple of vehicles being purchased, some equipment, some vehicles, some trucks, so, for police cars, police vehicles. And I noticed on television, because some action circles in some other towns, with days such as we had the last couple of days, cleaning up trees and things like that, and then up in the street. How does that dispose them? Because I've seen they use the dump truck to take them, where, what did they do with that stuff?
You're talking about the debris we, the DPW picks up? Well, there are spots for that. There's dump areas for that.
Again, getting back to purchases, if they're purchasing a chipper, I have never seen that thing used. A good-sized chipper.
I can't-
The towns towing behind the vehicle on something like that, that they're going toward this, and they'll actually do it with a chipper.
Okay.
No need to transport it or anything.
Okay. So I guess your question is, how much of this debris is being trucked out without being chipped?
Do they use the chipper?
I'm assuming they do, Jeff. We can find out.
Okay, okay.
Can we, Mike, is that you or Erin? Sure? Okay. Yeah, we'll get you an answer on that, Jeff. Anyone else care to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion. Erin?
Yes, Mayor. First on the agenda this evening, we have our engineers report. With us is Tom Lemanowitz from Alamo Group. I handed everyone out the monthly status report, and additionally placed at your seats this evening was the proposal for the 2021 Road Program. So before I hand it over to Tom, is everyone okay with me placing the proposal for the Road Program on next week's meeting agenda?
I have a question, where I can find it. One of the roads we have, we need development money for, 13th Avenue, is that, are we able to, will we get reimbursement, apply that toward the bond, like, or does that have to be a standalone project?
I was aware that you had that for that. This proposal is strictly based upon the streets that DPW requested, and that's why I listed them as a Chinese menu, for lack of a better term, so the council can go through and pick which ones, you know, that they want, if they want to spend this entire amount or not, but you have everything in front of you now to pick and choose. I would check on 13th Avenue with respect to CDBG, basically, typically, in a grant situation, if you do work before the grant is awarded, you can't pay for it.
It's been awarded.
So if this has already been awarded, then we should just take that off.
Right, and bid that as a standalone project?
Correct.
Right. So I would, you know, I just, that's a small street, and I know we applied for money for that. Real stone and dye are definitely in P, S, E, and G work zones, so we're choosing to pave them, and we're going to take credits there.
Yeah, we went through, tried to make sure, look, see if there's any overlap. Because I think the sections that we're talking about might not be the P, S, E, and G sections. Because I had somebody look to make sure there wasn't that overlap, but we'll obviously double-check.
Stone and dye, they're both-
I'm pretty sure those three are.
Yeah, both.
Again, I submitted this very recently with the intention of not having action at the next public meeting, simply because I knew there had to be a dialogue about it, but I wanted to throw it out there so the council knew, okay, this totals X dollars, we want to spend 80% of that, let's just chop these off right off the bat, you know, and this is basically to start a dialogue on what you want to do.
Okay.
I'll double-check it, and I'll have it written out, you know, early next week, just for information, or if I verify that those three, that these streets are not in the-
Hypothetically, if we did pass a, or approve a design proposal next Thursday, from that point, what is the most realistic bid opening scenario?
Well, I guess it depends on how many we pick.
Well, let's say it's this, let's, you know, take everything out that I said, you know, this kind of scope, how long of a turnaround to get it bid-ready?
I would say someone who ordered it, maybe two months, you know? So if it's approved in July, you know, you're starting about, starting work in October, so you probably got October, November, because you're going to be, if you give it to us in July, so July and August is getting the plans together, September you're awarded, usually take a month or so to get their act together, who knows what they're working on already, what's on their schedule already, so, you know, it gets into the fall, we might get it all done, we could, it's basically a mill and pay.
I'm looking, I'm just looking for like a bid opening date, like an optimistic scenario. If we, if we got something approved, let's say in the next two weeks, would there be a bid opening in, let's say, mid to late September? Is that realistic?
That'd be about as soon as I think I could get it.
Okay.
It'd be tight, you know, but it's a mill and pay. The most difficult part about this is going to make sure we get all the curbs that we want to fix.
Right.
That might, that's really the only slowdown, the rest of it is, you know, it's a phase of work, you know?
So for every additional street, or deduction, or addition, it's not as simple as looking at the length of the street, because you're dealing with curbs too, right?
Yeah, you'd have to look at the design number, because that's what, you know, we look at what's involved in the job. If we're not doing curb, then, okay, that's more or less than we have to deal with, so that, that amount of work is not in that number, if we're, obviously, we're not going to do it.
Mm-hmm.
So the work, the design number is more, is a better way to gauge how much time that particular road will take, you know, to use in the process.
Now, I just did a rough calculation here, this, we're talking about $2 million here.
That's a little higher, yeah.
Roughly. Why are we even thinking of spending that kind of money? We, what did the drainage situation come to?
I have those, sorry, $300,000. I have to go back and look at that number, I mean, I know that number, 300,000, was thrown out in the very, very beginning.
All right.
Now that we've done the design, if everything that we guessed we'd have to do is what we did, then that number would be more or less there, but, you know, now that we've actually done it, and we may now find, well, we need another 50 feet of curb here, we need another, you know, inlet over here, so I-
Okay, so 300, or 350,000?
Yeah, in that neighborhood.
Okay. Now here, this list of streets you have here, this is excluding P S and G's obligation to pave?
No, it's, well, like I said, I'm going to double-check, because it looks like there's maybe some overlap, but this list came from DPW, because I said, look, what do you want, what are you putting on your 2021 Road Program? He gave me the list, I priced it out, and now you, the intent is the council that can now see what DPW is requesting and how much it costs, and now you can decide how much you want to do.
This is just a starting point, Mayor.
Right.
And then we can look at the price and the condition of the roads, and decide what you're comfortable with doing this year.
Got you. Okay. But here's my point, this really isn't a good starting point, because I'm looking at stone have and dye have, they'll both should be under the umbrella of P S and G.
Yeah, but Mayor, they won't, they're not required to pave the whole street. So this is where we get into a situation where if we take care of it, that lets us, basically, if you take care of all of stone, we can tell them that other street, now you're doing curb to curb for us. So it does, you know, at some point, we have to complete the streets, we're telling them to ignore.
Has that homework been done?
I'm going to get into that discussion, of course, you know.
Well, if-
When it happened, well-
I think you should go into that discussion, because you're asking the council at this point to approve $2 million worth of paving, not you. I, and there's more discussion that you want to clarify?
As you say, I don't think the intent was ever to do all of these roads. This was a wish list of roads that needed to be paved, and then out of that, once we get the price, we can come up with a comfortable number that the council is willing to spend, and then apply that to the worst of the roads on this list.
Okay, and now I got it.
But it's never meant to be all these roads.
Okay. Well, let me say this in reference to this list, then. We're going to have to do the roads that public services came through on, they're disastrous. We have to do them, in the fair share, in the fair share equation, however it comes out. So we need to know which roads are, have been subject to public service, and which roads haven't, at this point.
Correct, and that was something that we've been working on, because we worked on it quite, almost since I saw it with the town, because P S, E, and G gave us, gave us a spreadsheet of the roads that they said they were working in, and what they intended to do with them, meaning half-paved, whatever. There was back and forth, and it was getting difficult to figure out what was what. Early last, last week, I sat there with Scott Cars again, and we found out that part of the problem was the list they gave Scott Cars in April was different than the list they gave me in June. So we had two different lists of roads. So we put them together, got one list of roads, then we went through, it turns out they missed four or five roads that were in the moratorium, which we required them to pave the full width, not the half width.
Right.
So we went through all this machinations to try to figure out, okay, what are they paving, what are they not paving? We're to that point now, and now we're going to take all the half roads, let's say they're paved in 20 half roads, we're going to have them pave 10 whole roads, and then we'll do the other. And that's, that is where I am right now, since-
Okay, now-
We're moving on.
Are there streets on this list that don't fall into that scenario you just said?
Yes, that is where I am.
I think they should be eliminated. We should know the streets we're going to have to pave in order to do our fair share of the deal, 50/50. Those we have to pave. Other streets here, they become secondary in terms of consideration, in third, in terms of consideration. But we need to know the streets that public service has been through, which we have to pave, and then take it from that point on. I don't think we'll be able to take it any further than that. I think that in itself is going to be a hefty lift.
Mayor, in fairness, some streets that public service disturbs, outside of just that part, like, some of these roads are okay. Like, they don't all fall into that horrific basket. Some do, but not all of them are made alike. Like, Carruth Avenue, the one that kind of snakes around, they did work there, but that road is six or seven years old. Like, it can probably survive having that trench in there for a year or two, you know what I mean, while we get to it at some point, because then we're just, you know, jumping into paving.
Okay, so then shouldn't we have a list of dire need streets?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, like you said, it's a starting point, I think more discussion has to happen. What I'm kind of like, you know, I'm no expert by any means, but some of these numbers are eye-popping, have, have the, and I'm just talking about the construction cost, have the prices of materials and all those things gone up significantly?
Well, I just, I just wrote a letter for another client, since February of last year, fuel, fuel price index had gone up 16%. So that affects asphalt, that affects everything. We have a curve in there, and curbs expensive.
That's what's inflating everything.
And we try, we try to be, make sure we have enough money in there for the curbing we're going to do, plus it's inevitable that somebody wants more, and I try to make sure we can accommodate a little extra in there, if the decision is to let us extend the curb a little bit more. So there's money in here to cover stuff. Like I said, there's a decent amount of curb in there. I think almost every street has got some. And I also include, I do my, I do my complete construction estimate, and then I take the total, and 10% of that I allot towards police traffic control, because I found, and that's pretty much, that covers it. You know, I very, I don't really hit that number too often, but, you know, that number has to be taken into account, because it's a cost.
Right. So the only other, two other comments I have, and this is just for us to view these numbers, usually we were used, we used to like, we look at the construction cost, and then the design proposal, like, it's not, there's nothing wrong with this, I'm just saying, we're seeing all the numbers in one pile together. You know, usually like, if we have a project that's worth a million, we say, yeah, let's do the $1 million, then you guys come to us with a proposal for 180. So that's kind of like, all the numbers are, we're looking at all the numbers at once, which is the same as always, they're just on the same piece of paper. I think, though, our budget is around a million, that's what we've been doing in the past few years. So to do 1.8 and not, like, some of these streets, like, they need to be done, but, like, I don't see like, the town getting the bang for their buck to do 1.8. You know, if we did like, 1.8 worth of the most critical streets, and like, where everyone lives, you know, my point is, I think we need to, you know, just keep talking about this.
And don't forget, you also have the curbs on the streets that P S and G's paved in the past.
All right.
There's that, because that, we're going to get it next.
That should be our priority, to get those streets, because they're disastrous. Every 50 feet, figured a home is 50 by 100, every 50 feet, you have an opening in the street, it looks like a roller coaster.
Mayor, maybe we do a field trip one day? You know?
We need to know the streets, though, that were, are subjected to-
No, that list is out there, but I think maybe, you know, five or six people in the car to spend an hour or two, you know?
Well, like I said, I made the P S, E, and G list, so let me, I just want to review that before I give it to you, to show you what is on more, I don't, I don't need you to go look at more accorded streets, P S, E, and G paved.
Right, right.
You know, unless there's curbing, which, you know, we kind of assess with DPW.
You're in charge, you're in charge of the curbing, 30%, if it's gone, it needs to be replaced, that's simple. So there's no need for us to verify the curbing aspect of it.
This is Scott's list of streets that he recommends.
No, I understand, but it just, it comes to a very, very high number, that we haven't, we've never done 2 million and paved it.
No, no.
That was the intent of the-
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
It's just a list of the worst streets in town, now you guys pick which ones are later.
I would, I would suggest that we do all we have to do with P S and G, consider we spent 340 already on the drainage. I would concede going to that million mark, less the 340, so you're left with 660.
What's 340, I'm sorry?
The drainage, the drainage.
Yeah, but that's like a separate bond, separate project.
I know it's a separate bond, but we're talking about spending money per year here, even though it's, it's being bonded, but that's credit carding the future. So we have to keep a cap on that also. Be cognizant of it. And I, I'm figuring this year is going to, it was going to exceed the normal $400,000, $500,000 that we normally spend for repaving roads, because of the public service aspect of it.
Mayor, can I say something?
Absolutely.
I think Scott Cars should try to put these in some kind of order, the worst ones. This way, if we're coming up with a number in the next few weeks, we start with the worst in, you know, we don't know which, I don't know which ones on here are in dire need more than the other one. He does, this is what he does all day. So I think we should get a list from him in some kind of order, from, you know, worst to, then getting, that can wait a couple of years, possibly.
Yes, without a doubt. But once again, I'm emphasizing, we're going to be forced to pave the streets that public service has gone through.
Yeah, that's, that's, you're 100% right with that, but then after that, if there's seven streets that could, that we can afford to do, let him put it in order, which are the worst in his opinion that need to be done first, then next year, we look at the next group.
Public service committed to, under the, it's not, you know, right? See, that's the problem.
We're not really-
We don't even know if they're getting to it this year.
Oh, I've been told that they're going to get to it this year.
Yeah, we've been told a lot by then, and-
Well, but-
So what, what do we do if that's your plan and they don't, they don't come through?
It goes for next year. I'm concerned about the streets that are done, done this year.
They're not, they're not paving right now. Yeah, as far as I know, they were gonna start paving in August, September.
On their end?
Yeah. Don't commit one of them right now. We can go back and forth with them.
Yeah, I can imagine, it's probably a zoo.
It's a big problem.
Yeah. So, so now that we totally confused you, Tom.
Well, there was, I'm gonna take the PSCNG, just look at it and, you know, make sure I'm there where, that I agree with what my, my technique. So then we'll have the PSCNG list with all the streets they're touching. Then, and we'll have how many credits there are there and decide what we want them to pave in full and how much that leaves us to do.
Right.
Because there's an issue, the issue of there's moratorium, where they're paving curb to curb. There's issues of, there are some streets that we have grants already in hand, that were paving curb to curb, so we take that credit and throw that half street someplace else. And that's what, that's what we did. We got all these, we figured out where, where there's overlap of work and where we can take PSC and G, PSCNG paving and throw it someplace else.
Okay. I think, I think that's our starting point.
Yeah, so like I said, I, I will, I'm gonna look at, I'll be, in the next couple of days, I'll be looking at that, that spreadsheet again and again, that we compiled the version that Mr. Cars has, the version that I had, we corrected for moratorium, we corrected for a bunch of things. They had one section, they were paving an easement to backyards on their spreadsheet. So that's credit. So, you know, they were, the, the spreadsheet, I, I tried to ask them to fix it and there was really not much of a response.
Sounds like the federal government, the way it's being run.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Moving along.
Okay. All right, just going to our report, I, I changed the format a little bit in this report because it's trying to make it look like so my other one, to make my lot easier to draw. If, if this works, that's fine. If you'd like to go back to the original, that's fine too. I just tried to compartmentalize things a little bit. Starting off with the basketball court, again, we, we started that base mapping on that. I'm expecting the base mapping to be done beginning of next week so we can start on the design for the, for the three basketball courts. PSCNG paving.
I'm sorry, that was what we passed today, right?
Yes.
Okay.
PSCNG paving, we just went through. The traffic signal, I have to reach out to county again because I'm still waiting for the shared services agreement. 2021 drainage, I'm gonna have to push that to the August 19th regular meeting unless the council wants to do a, a, a special in advance of the workshop, I could get it done for the 12. That's your choice.
So, so what are you asking for, a special meeting?
Would you be, would you be interested, would you be doing a special meeting for that item? Or do I wait till the night?
Erin?
We have-
When's the award open? When's the, when's the, the bid opening?
Well, that's what I'm determined, because I'm planning you're gonna have your meeting.
Our dates for August are August 5th and the 19th. So it would either have to be a special on the 5th or at the regular meeting on the 19th.
What about the 12?
There's no meeting on the 12.
Oh, okay.
Unless you wanna go to Aruba. He did, he wants to go? Well, I was, I was, hey Sal, I was implying we will all be in Aruba and there'll be no meeting on that. That was a joke hypothetical type of situation.
Today's July 8th, so it'd be just under a month.
We're not gonna be there soon.
I just thought we were being invited. I mean-
We wish.
I don't think anybody wants us there, you know what I mean?
So you're welcome-
That's why it'd be tight, because I gotta get some time for the newspapers to get it in the paper, then I have to do the bid opening, then I have to get my recommendation to-
So let's do the 12.
Do the 12 by the 20th, 30th of December.
All right, Tom. Go to the following meeting, is that good?
I don't care about this project.
Erin, following meeting good? The 12, what is it?
The 19th?
The 19th.
19.
Yeah, the 19th. I was trying to do before the 19th.
Yes, but the fact of what you're saying, the 5th is tight.
I was trying to make it, I was trying to-
Like you said, unless you go to Aruba, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, I don't think the 5th is gonna be realistic.
All right, Sal. The 19th, so.
Yeah, so we'll stick to the 19th. Okay, that'll be the opening. I mean, that'll be the award recommendation date. Municipal park agreement, municipal park improvements. We did our, our drive under the boat. And we also got some comments from DPW and Fire. They're asking us to, and I haven't done this because I haven't gotten approval for it, to move the driveway for the marina opposite the school driveway. So they could pull into the school driveway and just back right through the parking lot into the water, which would be easy, which would allow more parking in the parking lot because I'm not turning that boat around inside the parking lot. I don't think it's a permit issue. The other issue that they have is that the existing boat ramp is too flat. So by the time the boat floats off the trailer, your tow vehicle's in the water. So that's a different animal, because now you're talking about installing a new boat ramp or ripping that one out and dredging the water, dredging the bottom and putting a new ramp in. I talked to, I emailed our permits guy. He said he's gonna get me something on what additional permits that would require, but that would obviously also increase the price dramatically because now you're working in the water. We have to survey, get the bottom surveyed, figure what we're digging out, there's, there's concrete to go in, so I don't know if you wanna investigate that. I know when I was in the area at one point, I pulled in there just to familiarize myself and I think it was, the county was launching a small Boston Whaler, I think it was, it looked like the county, and they didn't use the ramp. They came into, into the parking lot, they went off to this corner and dropped it down the bank because, like I said, they weren't, they weren't, the depth of the water on the ramp, the depth doesn't increase fast enough. So you can't, you're, like I said, when you step out of the driver's seat, you're stepping in the water already because you're that far into the lake, into the river, because the bottom, because the ramp is so flat.
Yeah.
So they're just dropping it off the bank.
Well, let me, I wasn't here for, when this topic was discussed, what was the goal of, of the council in terms of the marina? Was it to make it a perfect slip for boating? And, which would entail what Tom is talking about, concrete ramp, dredging, which might, you might get into a big to-do with the Army Corps of Engineers there.
It's a permit, yeah.
It's a permit. What was the goal? Was it beautification or?
Beautification and the enhancement of the people that spend time there with the simple stuff, fishing, sitting at tables, going for some kind of walk close to nature. That's the goal. More aesthetic than, than boating, because that's not really, you know, a boating destination.
Well, the boating I'm talking about was your emergency boats.
Yeah, but this part, we're not spending a million dollars so they, you know, have a, I don't know, like a Taj Mahal boat entrance.
It works now.
Yeah, so-
That's fine. Then what about, but again, moving the entrance could help increase the parking capacity because I can't put parking where I need the-
So we can move the entrance, but we don't have to move the ramp? If you move the entrance, you have to move the ramp.
Well, we could, we might be able to make it work. It's not, it's not that much of a relocation. I'll look at it, I'll throw you a concept. If you don't like it, then we go back and leave orders. That's, that's, that, making a drawing like that is-
So, Tom, basically, the theme here is aesthetics, that's basically. We're not looking to correct our, our boating launch.
Okay, that's fine. And again, I wasn't here when that, when this whole thing has started, so that, that information is good.
Was your problem with the police department going down with the boats and everything?
We don't have any boats. Just talking about the fire department.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm sorry, fire department.
I, I had no idea. I didn't-
Well, they seem to think that the ramp is too flat and they'd rather go off that corner because, again, the boat floats off the trail.
Well, if you leave the word entrance, is it a problem for them to go off the corner?
Well, they have to drive diagonally through the lot, so that messes up my parking.
Okay, so by moving-
Let me, let me do some quick concepts. I'll send it to Mr. Philigno and you guys can discuss.
By moving the ramp, it, it conforms to what the request, was that the fire department we're talking about?
Yeah.
Right, if we move everything to the south side, okay, we come in the south side by the school, go down the south side toward new ramp, that leaves everything else open for parking. If I leave it where it is, with the boat, with us coming in through the middle and having to do a loop with the boat in the parking lot to get it back, I eat half the parking lot with my maneuvering.
Okay. So what I think we should do is allow him to do his thing here and produce a rendition of what works for the dropping of the boat into the water and the parking.
And I'll get you numbers on our permitting fees and, you know, as far as the extra construction amount.
All right. Now, now if you, you're getting any resistance in terms of the permits, then you'll have to alter the proposed plan.
Yeah, I mean, we can say it's an emergency, it's an emergency ramp. I mean, the county uses it, we use it, so-
That's, that's okay there?
A little bit.
Interesting.
Tom, we spoke, I don't know when we spoke, but the original engineer from Alamo on this gave us the impression that we could take the guardrails out. And I made his, they made this, you know, it guided us towards doing this and everything. And I think your position at some point was, the guardrails are there for a reason.
Correct.
So that, that changes a lot, you know, it, you know, our, our whole goal is aesthetics here. So again, the point I'm getting to is, can, can you, on paper, like a total, complete concept plan of what we're moving towards now here? Because I don't know if there's other things we included. You know, I had this vision from two years ago when we started applying for money. I, I don't know where, where it is now, now that we have a, a new engineer, an experienced engineer, of what we can and cannot do to make that part look nice. So can we get something in one shot that this is what the marina's gonna look like? And then some concrete dates, because, not concrete dates, but, you know, two, three month windows, because the money's been in place for over a year.
Right.
And, you know, this, you know, everything's been preliminary assessment, we're calling the state, this, that, like, you know, I'm just curious, when will we start being, being in a position to make a decision, this is what the marina's gonna look like and we proceed to, to design and bidding?
All right, I'll, I'll get some sketches together.
Because I think we've approved the design proposal for Alamo.
Yes.
Yes, we have.
So I imagine that process is-
And the preliminary assessment is, is well underway at this point.
Right.
That's a several month period, several month process, it's all record keeping and such.
But then the, the vision has changed because of your, you know, your expertise and everything and your recommendation. So I think before you guys get way too far into it, I think we need to re-sign off on the vision of what this will look like.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I, that I changed was, again, the guide rail, the plan showed the guide rail being replaced by bollards, which the county won't allow and I, I certainly would not recommend because a guide rail is a guide rail. You wander off the road, it bounce off and it pushes you back. In the case of a bollard, if you wandered off and the bollard hit the front right corner of your car, spins the car around. So you don't want that. And I, I know the county wouldn't accept that either because, for exactly the reason I said. And then the other issue was, you were gonna, the idea was to put a full height curb across the front of the property. While that road currently doesn't have curb, the water just falls off, the side goes and the grass goes away. If you put curbing on it, if you have a little dip that used to just sheet off to the side, well now you put curbing. So if there's a dip now, it's puddle. So you put an inlet in. Well, if you put the inlet in, the DEP's gonna see that because it's within the flood plain, they're gonna say, well, you need water quality now, because before, the water came off the road, went through 200 feet of grass before it got to the river. Now you're putting the dirty water from the road directly into the river, we need to do something. And you just don't wanna do that. You just, it's more, much more aggravation than it's worth. So what I talked to our guys about is we're gonna put a flush curb in, which means, the curbing, the purpose of curbing is to hold the edge of the road. So you put a flush curb in, it holds the edge of the road, it doesn't crack off, but yet the water can still go across it. So that was kind of, so it's still curbing, it's, it's at a full height, it's gonna be flush. And then changing the, the guide rail to bollards. Now, I don't know if anybody's ever seen, and I'm not remembering the name of it, but it basically, it's a, it's a, it's a guide rail, looks like a standard highway guide rail, but it rusts. It's intended to rust. And it get, it's supposed to give a rustic look. I don't know if you wanna go that far with it? I've, I've seen it and it's like a, people look at it and, you know-
You see it on the Parkway a lot.
Yeah, that's where it is, you see it a lot. And, I mean, I guess, given the choice, maybe some people like it, it, no big difference.
The Patina?
Yeah, there you go, that's the latest one. And then other than that, like I said, now we just, just came up with what the, what the Fire was asking for in DPW. So let me do a few sketches. I'll base it on the plan you were last given. And I'll just literally just mark it up in red to say, this is now this, this is now this, and here's the alternate parking lot layout. You know, it'll be quick and dirty, but, you know, it'll, it'll get the point across.
Okay.
Gilbert Avenue, I know that was going, but I, I saw stuff in the office, that's getting straightened, finished up. Rosemont Park, plans are complete. We, we altered what the vendor was planning because the vendor was planning a type of wire that is not of the same quality that we use. And what we use is what the, what PSCNG uses. So basically, I'm following PSCNG's lead on the wire type. It's a matter of what the, what the insulation is made of and how it, if, it's affected by abrasion and all this other stuff.
That's for the lighting?
For the lighting at Rosemont, yes. I, I sent that to the electrician early last week. He was on vacation last week, so this week he's catching up and hopefully we can get a new number from him as far as we're changing the wire there. Donor and Echo, nothing happening there. Mola Boulevard, we have, we're continuing monitoring PSCNG. They said they were gonna do Mola first so we can get these projects taken care of.
So they've been out there, Boulevard's been closed a few times and it looks like they've done new, fresh stuff going, leading into the homes. Do we know if they're done on the Boulevard?
I'm gonna send, I'm gonna ask, well, if Scott doesn't have the time, I'll have somebody run out and look at it.
Because we awarded a bid to pave that.
In November, yeah.
As, as soon as they're done, we call the contractor and they should be into pavement.
That's a one, two. Now, we have to be careful and I'm gonna double check what the, what the fuel prices were. Because if you awarded that in November, your fuel price is based upon the fuel index of the month before you opened bids, which would have been, I guess, October. And they've been going up ever since.
No, this was awarded way before Novem, Novem, well, I, I don't know.
You, I know you had to have it awarded by November. And I thought it was pretty close to that.
Okay.
But in any case, it's-
But my, my point is, the day they're done, we need to be on the phone with our contractor because that, that's our main road and it is-
Unfortunately, the PSCNG won't give me schedules, I gotta kind of look at-
No, but I know they've closed the road several times. So the last thing they were doing is the, what's it called?
Services.
The services.
Right.
So, I mean, once they're working on a given street, that's, there's only so many days that they're gonna do that, right?
I will catch up with them, I'll send somebody out.
Maybe 15 homes on the whole stretch, so-
Yes, and I'll send somebody out tomorrow and just have them mark out where they can see the services are done. Because once the services are done, that means you're done.
Right.
If it's just the main, they still got to come back.
Okay.
Uh, Tuella, I know that, that they were being chased down for some final documents. Cherry Hill Playground, the fencing is complete. I conferred with the Recreation Department. Uh, while I was out there, I noticed that the handicap parking wasn't quite correct. So I gave Recreation a sketch of new striping to get the, uh, striping in compliance with the American Disability Act. Head Wallet, the intersection of Linwood and River. Uh, again, there's a shared services agreement. I'm going to get back with Mr., Mr. Murphy on that. In addition to the one we talked about earlier for River, the River Road, River Drive intersection. Uh, Fleischer Brook Concrete Channel Cleaning. We spoke to, uh, the county, um, yesterday or today. Mr. Lenny gave you the contact, thank you. And they want us to, they want us to give them a scope of work to say, tell us what they needed to do so they can figure out manpower and whatnot. So that's, that's being coordinated and getting moving on that. I need to get you a proposal for the 21, 2021 DOT Municipalate Grant, which is Mola, uh, from Linden to Phillips, Phillip. We worked on a couple of other grant applications, you have to see there for the 2021 TAP and the Bergen County Open Space. And the other items that have, that are sitting waiting for direction, uh, the police headquarters, slaughterhead, uh, slaughter, bam, road, sewage pump station, the force main over the Passaic and the River Drive Building Park. Just a couple of other things, I've been in contact with, um, DOT. They're planning to do some work on Route Four where we are, uh, reconfiguring some of our utilities to get out of their way. The state has, uh, is going to reimburse the town for our work on that. We met out there yesterday with the, with DOT, the contractor, Mr. Cars and myself. We sent surveyors out today because we want to check for utility conflicts. I'm not crazy about how they redesigned one of those sewers. Uh, so we're going to be working on that, uh, in earnest because they expect to start construction in about two weeks. Uh, we've also been in contact, talking with the county on the parkways, bridge, uh, widening, going over River Road at Fredericks. The state, the parkway rather, is going to widen that section. If you, as you're coming north on Rivers, two lanes, just after you pass Martha, it goes down to one lane, it goes past Fredericks, under the parkway, and then it comes open to two lanes. The parkway is committed to widening it from the north side of the parkway to Fredericks, but they won't continue to Martha. So basically, if they do what they want to do, as you're, as you're coming north on Martha, it's two lanes, you're going to go past Martha, it's going to go down to one lane for about 50 feet and it's going to widen back over the, and the county's indicated to us that the parkway is not going to include, increase their paving. The county's looking at if they want to do it. So we're get, we're kind of sharing some sketches with the utilities and what's going to take. And then we have to decide, because again, we, Mr. Philigno, I talked about this, they haven't decided if the county wants to do this or not because they don't know what's involved. So they're looking for a little bit of help and just giving them a couple, few hours to just, to help them out with utilities. Uh, we did find some kind of telemetry system over there. There's utility poles that have to be moved, there's a hydrant that has to be moved, you know, so the, the, the county's trying to determine what this is all going to mean to them if they pay for it and then get into shared services.
That's county, county road, correct?
Yes.
And then you have the parkways, the state road.
Yes.
So where do we come into this? If they're going to be idiotic enough to go from two to one to two or three, and they're, they're trying to put some, some type of guilt complex on us?
That, that's, that, to be honest with you, I, I approached that with Mr. Murphy and he hasn't really answered me that well, so.
Did he send an email to him, he wouldn't really answer me?
He, he's, I'm not sure if he's doing it on purpose or not, uh, but maybe I'll go, maybe I'll call somebody else and just kind of say, hey, you know, it's a county road, you know, why are you getting this town involved?
Yeah, what are we talking about here?
You know, um, so I'll look into that some more. Like I said, I, I can, I can deal with that. I mean, for the effort that we, little bit of communication we put in, it hasn't been much. And also, there was a call last week, apparently there's a resident, uh, was reconstructing his driveway, um, and felt it'd be suitable to dispose of the soil in Fleischer's Brook. So that, I, I spent some time with the DEP, we called him the emergency, uh, number, we got case numbers, we got enforcement involved, so that's an evolving story.
Where, whereabouts was this?
I'm down. It was amazing. I, I could not believe anybody thought that, would think that'd be a good idea.
And how did we find out about this? A neighbor called in?
Apparently.
Good for them.
How much of the rain were talking to?
About 50 yards of soil.
Wow.
50 yards?
Is that like a, a local ordinance violation or more like a?
It violated your development, it violated your flood plain ordinance, your soil moving ordinance, and a DEP flood hazard and possibly wetlands.
Wow.
So he's not likely to do this again.
If I was him, I'd be there with a shovel 24 hours a day, getting it out of there.
Well, the issue is, you know, I walked back in there and I told him, I said, look, I don't know who put this here, whoever takes it out, if you get, they can either get a per, apply for a permit, which they probably won't get because they narrowed the channel and the DEP is not going to stand for that. So to get it out of there, you need, you, you really get it out of there with any kind of efficiency and get a machine.
Sure.
But the way they put it in there, I mean, if you're in a machine and you're not, you don't behave yourself, you're going to wind up in the brook. You're going to go right down the bank. So, you know, that, that's an evolving process, DEP is the ultimate.
Yeah, DEP, because you got to worry about if that dirt was contaminated also.
Yeah, I mean, it literally came from under his driveway. Supposedly, he took the, he took the asphalt or got rid of that properly enough, which.
It's from the bottom. Crazy.
Yes.
What else you have for us, Tom?
Um, I think that's all I have at this point.
Any questions for Tom? If not, I'm sorry we confused you at the beginning of this conversation.
I believe you, I've been living those things, so I would like that, uh, you know, everybody help generate some, some, some forward movement.
An update on the Boulevard, that section is very, very important. With the PSCNG.
Yes.
What their, what their timeline is, is that, is our main road?
I, I've been asking for timelines for two months.
Yeah, it's crumbling, you know?
Because if it's crumbling, if it gets too bad, you're going to get that when you're reconstructing.
That's natural wear and tear, it's not even just them, like that road, it's time for us to do it, we just need, you know.
Yeah, because if, if it gets too bad, then you're not building a paving anymore, you're, you're reconstructing, which, you know.
Yeah, Tom, regarding that, that meeting with the monument, I spoke with, with Mike Hughes and we should have Sensary there also, uh, who's going to do a lot of contributing to labor and material, get, get the whole scope proper and then proceed from that point.
Right, I mean, if the plan you need to do, so that's, that's okay. Like I said, I can, I can split things up on the proposal enough that we can get something started while we're figuring out that part.
Yeah, but don't put anything in that proposal that we're going to want to retract until you understand exactly who's doing what and maybe doesn't necessarily have to go into that proposal.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we have, we have to do a plan, whether whoever does it, it doesn't really matter.
Correct.
We have to do a plan that people are going to look at.
Right.
The question is, how many items are those in that plan have to go into a big booklet?
Right.
Specifications and all the other stuff, because it's going to be big and how much does it.
Right.
So we can at least start the survey, that's not going to change no matter how you do it, you can self-assure, we still have to do the map, you know, the plan, it's just a matter of who's doing what and we won't do that part until we know who's doing what. And then at that point, we create the, the stack book.
Okay.
I, I know exactly what, I know your concern.
Okay, good. And also being that she's been involved, Lorraine, I would hope you'd be at that meeting.
One minute again?
Well, we're going to try and put it together.
Okay.
Okay? And, and Roy, right? Mike, we want Roy in there too.
Yeah, is that, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be careful, I'm not going to get anybody in trouble. The issue is that if it's over, you've got Roy's CPA, so if you're limited to 40,000, so, you know, there's, there's a big threshold there and I believe there's ways you can be specific without having to do an all equal normally. You can say, we want this product, but you have to accept someone to say, my product's equal, I want to use mine. But for like the statue, you don't want to consider that, you found which one.
Right.
So I got, that's, those are the questions that I need to be invested in.
Okay, and a lot, and a lot of other items, as we go down the trail, might be donated. Might catch an electrician who's going to donate his time here also. So I, I think we got to do the fundamental, let's get, let's get this meeting together. Know, understand all the nuts and bolts and then from that point, we'll, we'll take it, okay? All right, anybody else for Tom? Tom, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have a safe trip home, it's supposed to get nasty.
You too.
You too.
We might sleep, sleep in here tonight.
Okay, Mayor, moving on to items for resolution. Two A, we have emergency work within the Department of Public Works. They had to have emergency work done to their gas pumps, so this is the price. Any questions? Okay, two B is approval of items of revenue and appropriation. This is standard for grant applications. This is in regard to our clicket or ticket grant application. Two C, it's a renewal of our sound system contract. They actually switched companies, um, so this is, would be the standard renewal for that.
Is that for this system here?
Yes.
What do, what do we pay them?
Seventeen ninety-five.
Okay, what do they do for us? They come in and check it or something?
This was installed prior to me coming here. I would assume this is their maybe equipment, I don't.
Have you ever had to call them in your time here?
Yes, we've had to call them.
And they come in?
Mm-hmm.
And they haven't charged us for coming in?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Could we also, I was, I'm sorry, could we also have maybe them look at putting a microphone by Sal, something there?
Mm-hmm.
Possibly?
Yeah.
If everybody's okay with that? Because when you watch the tape at home, you, you can't hear.
I want to discuss it closed.
Can't hear, Sal.
So will we be going back to our regular seating because that might, that problem might be eliminated?
We, we should.
I, I like the clerk next to me, I'd like going forward for that to, to be standard procedure.
Okay.
All right, but I, I'd like to be on the, on the other side of you. I'd like that.
We're talking in the end of the room over there, Dana?
Are we at some point going to go back and have our work sessions back into?
I, I don't know if, if, uh. Yeah, and we, yeah, and we don't have to be.
You save money that way.
Squashed in there, if we get, when, we had times in there that was like 15, 20 people and they're all clamming over each other. I, I think this actually gave us a, a better course of action. Erin, also, can we see what the problem with that mic is there? I know it just, it's picking up on the taping.
I, I think the only solution would to not have a wire, would be to not have a wireless mic.
To go back to a, a wire mic, like we had, uh, yeah. I, I don't know, Counsel, I think we should because it's.
You get there, you can't hear anything.
You hear Erin.
Yeah, that's why, because people don't talk into it. So the best thing to do is a wire. It's not on, you have to, you have to hold it down till it turns green. You have to hold it down there. Hold it down till it turns green.
My finger doesn't fit in the, the key missing down there.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
It's the voice, it's the voice.
How'd you do that?
Oh, I turned it off, I turned it off.
Check, test one, two, check and test one, two. Test, 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 test. How about here? Now it's not picking up. So why is that? Why is it like, this is where you, you should always be three, four inches away from a microphone?
I, I, I think that just people might not hold it down until it turns green or, you know, the, the microphone's over here and they're talking over here.
No, even though it's on green now, but as I get further away, it's not, it's not, is there a volume control on it that has to be lifted? Have the technician look into why this should be. Should be able to hear yourself when you're speaking. So.
I'll have them look into the wireless.
When you hear yourself, sometimes you'll stop talking that way when you hear yourself talking, so.
I'll have them look into the wireless mic and then perhaps at the next meeting, we could go back to our regular seating arrangements so that Mr. Gracia could have his microphone back. Okay, next would be, uh, the Recreation Department. They need a, an authorization for three of their staff members to be able to use a Home Depot card.
And the ancillary workers also had it, correct?
They're just going to be like authorized users to the card? I don't think that they'll have their own individual.
And this, uh, this is standard procedure. Alls we're doing is renewing it for another year, basically. So nothing's changed?
No, that's what I was wanting.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's the question I asked too.
Okay, the next item is a shared service agreement in regards to the snowgo machine. Initially, Mr. Cars had presented purchasing the equipment as the borough and then it was explored, uh, to look into a shared service agreement. And I do believe that meetings were held with the mayor, the BA.
So we're going to rent it, rent it from them as needed.
Mike, what's your opinion?
So we had a meeting, a very productive meeting. Uh, we decided that the best course of action for this borough is to enter into an agreement with them and it would be an as-needed basis. So we, it wouldn't cost us anything unless we, unless we used it. By signing the agreement, we get first dibs on it after they're done with it. So their town comes first, ours comes second. Anybody else that wants to use it has to wait till Elmwood Park's done with it. So I think it's a good idea and I think we should enter into that agreement. I, it could be whatever you want it to be.
If you don't call them, you never pay anything, so.
If you never use it, you never pay anything.
We can have them draft the shared service proposal since it's their equipment, that's standard, and then we'll do a resolution authorizing the signing of the agreement. So it's up to you, whatever length you want to make the agreement.
Well, let's, let's go one year, see how it works out.
I agree, I agree, one year.
Now we can do an extra row.
Daniel, your new spot? You're requesting, you're moving now to your new spot?
What's that? Yeah, absolutely.
And we'll get a mic, yeah, we'll get a mic there next week.
I'm storming out of here, I've had enough.
We'll get you a mic, we'll get you a mic next week.
What is this?
Yes, sir. Automatic renewal, meaning that we would be blinded to renewing?
We'd bind it to, it'll be renewed automatically unless you stop it 20 days in a row.
Okay.
And then you could do like a 30-day notice type of thing after the initial one year.
Okay. You, you feel that's the best?
You don't have to worry about it if you don't.
I mean, you could go into a 30-year and if you don't want to spend the money that year, you say, it's no three feet or we don't want to use you. You don't spend a nickel unless we call you.
I like the way.
They don't just earn that on come, we generate the call. So just having the agreement just says that we get first dibs after them. So I don't, signing the agreement doesn't do anything.
I still, I, I like the way Sal wants to structure it with the one year.
Well, well, Mike, if we go to 30 years, let's say.
I'm kidding, I'm just making a point.
I was going to say, I.
You don't spend a nickel unless you call, that's right.
Right, but I was going to say I won't be here for 30 years.
You won't have to worry about that.
I won't have to worry about, no, no, we, we should do the one year, uh, like you said, make it continuous and, and the only item in there, if we did want to rescind, we can.
Yeah.
And that would happen around this time of the year, so we have plenty of time and space to, to debate it after the winter.
Just so this way you don't have to worry about every year doing it.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, for, by resolution, every year, every year.
Right, if you're going to do one year though, we have to do that.
Every year we had to keep repeating it.
Yeah.
And somebody else could end up helping it.
No, it'll automatically mean that.
Good point.
Well, we need to get in touch with the attorney before we cross that board and this way we can, so, work it out, just like we did with Daniel's school.
Well, and Mike, here's another thing on the 30-year theme. Climate change, you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, next on the agenda are vacation buybacks. Any questions? Then we have a redemption of a third-party tax lien. Okay, following that, we have, uh, there was a removal on the planning board of a member due to lack of attendance. So we need to memorialize that via resolution. And then additionally, I included, um, the resume of the mayor's recommendation at, for an alternate member and a current alternate member, Mr. Farrar will be moved to a regular member.
So Mr. Elders is the new alternate and Mr. Farrar is the new member?
Correct.
You replace youth, youth with youth, that's good. Keep the balance.
I'm catching on, Daniel.
Okay, two I's.
I'm wearing off on you and you're wearing off on me. I think.
Two I is, uh, an annual resolution for Bergen County Community Development Regional Committee, you need to appoint your municipal representatives.
I've done that in the past, I'd be happy to continue doing so. Unless you have other ideas?[1750.22]
I think we should keep the committee in place.
Aaron, you're the alternate, right?
I'm an alternate, correct, so I believe it's the mayor and yourself, and then Mike, no, I think it's you and I as regular members, and then Mike and the mayor as our alternates.
I move, we keep it the same.
Yeah, I'll say.
She, she could still function doing it, no?
We could discuss that in executive session, I'd prefer, just my whole thing. Two J is an urban parks grant application, we need the authorization for the mayor to sign the application. Two K is a retirement compensation payout, the only difference that will need to be made is that the amount will be held in escrow until otherwise advised by our legal counsel. Okay, there is one add-on that was in front of everyone, so it would be two L, it was the DPW quotes. So this is the equipment that was requested on our capital ordinance that was passed. So Scott provided all the quotes today, which are before you, and I could add that on to next week's agenda. They're all done through state contract.
And we approved all this, correct?
Yes. Okay, three A is parking restriction additions, Mike?
Yes, got a request or a complaint from a resident, Katmas Ave area. The Traffic Division did a study and agreed that it's hazardous, so they made that recommendation to have no parking in certain aspects of that street there.
Mike, I have a question about no parking. I saw that we did something on Church Street, right? So I think the, their signage, no parking here to here, would it be beneficial to have the DPW do the yellow box? I, I noticed that driving by, I think that would like complete, complete the picture. You know? So.
So Mike, in regards to this, basically, the traffic study proved the resident was right?
Well, not right or wrong, just all of our attention had its potential dangers, and the Traffic Division agreed on its potential dangers.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with that? Sal, they'll be parking in your driveway now.
Okay, Sal, so can you draft the ordinance? Thank you. All right, next, we have an application for a calendar raffle for the Elmwood Park Football Bombers, they do it on an annual basis, I do think that they took a hiatus last year. Moving on, we have departmental reports, we have the Board of Health meeting minutes from May tenth, 2021, planning board minutes from May twelfth, 2021, library meeting minutes from May seventeenth, 2021, rec advisory from May seventeenth, 2021, the Building Department monthly report from June, Millennium Strategies monthly report through June, the Finance Department monthly report through June as well, and then the Municipal Court monthly report for June, 2021. Any questions on any of the reports? Okay, with that being said, Mayor, that's all I have on my agenda.
You mean it's that time for council reports?
Yes, it is.
There we go. Councilwoman Ballastiri. You need more time?
No, mine's short.
We can come back to you in an hour or two.
Well, I will be here, go ahead. So anyway, unfortunately, our concert had to be canceled on Tuesday due to the weather, but our next concert will be Tuesday, July thirteenth, seven thirty, B Street Band, a tribute to Bruce Springsteen. Looking forward to several weeks of concerts coming up every Tuesday, I'm pleased that we are now opening and having events of our community after such a long closure due to pandemic, our fun, events thus far have been very well attended, so I'm looking forward to the next one, next Tuesday. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. Councilman Shaqib Fakore.
Thank you, Mayor. This week, I attended the Diversity Committee on Tuesday, they're working on a fuel project with the Police Department, thanks, Mike. Great things they're doing, I want to thank them again. I was not able to make the Youth Advisory Committee, so I had to work that day. That's about it, progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Mr. Fasola. Councilman Fasola, you still with us?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I am. I want to commend Scott Cars and our DPW and our Fire Department, Police Department for the work they've been doing with the storms you guys have been having. I can't say that I experienced them, but I saw some photos and some videos of the storms, and it looked pretty bad, so I want to commend them for the, the hard work they've been doing on those storms. With that, progress.
Thank you. This is, this is really amazing to me, how we're communicating with him, and he's what, what is that, three thousand miles? It's something.
Yeah, about thirty-five hundred miles or so.
Wow, incredible. How's the food over there?
Yeah.
Good?
It's good, I'm putting on the weight that I lost.
You better not. Do some running in the, do some running in the plane on the way home, back and forth, up and down the aisle. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Colobet? Thank you. Councilwoman Pellegrini?
Yes, may please update a reminder, this year's Junior Police Academy will be held on August second through August sixth for ages ten to thirteen, and August ninth to August thirteenth for ages fourteen to sixteen. For more information, please contact Detective Randy Guerillo at two oh one, seven nine six, oh seven oh oh, extension one eighteen. To pick up an application, stop by Police Headquarters Dispatch Desk. The deadline to register is tomorrow, but if there's any reason you can't make the deadline, please reach out to Randy. Board of Health update, our Board of Health Secretary Marlene DiStefano informed the Board of Health members that the state of New Jersey will be sponsoring a vaccination site right here in Borough Hall courtroom on July twenty-eighth from two PM to six PM. No need for pre-registration, and all walk-ins are welcome from any and all towns in the state. Everyone must provide identification. The vaccine will be Pfizer and can be given to anyone age twelve and older. For further questions, please call Marlene at two oh one, seven nine six, fourteen fifty-seven, extension two oh one. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Lorraine. Council President Wetshor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to the Police Department, the Fire Department, and DPW. Without them doing everything for the last three days, I don't know what this town would look like. And let me tell you, tonight and the weekend too is going to be very bad, and I thank the, thank everybody, because without them, this town would be underwater, and the trees would be down, and we would have no place to go, so that's one thing I want to thank them for. Second, the Youth Advisory, I was there, Shaqib.
Thank you.
And what do you thought? Let me tell you, these kids are so involved, you saw them at the Memorial Day Parade, what they did, the vets, they're planning on a lot of things. We're planning to do a hell of a lot of things for this town, that the town has never seen the, the youth do for us. It'll be coming up, you know, in a couple of weeks, you'll see things, we'll be advertising and everything else. That's the next thing. And let me tell you, without Shaqib, Francesco, and Tanisha, they're the heart and soul of the whole thing. I'm only the senior citizen in the background working with them, but, you know, they have their heart and soul into this town with the kids, they're getting involved, so this way they could see what this town does, what this council does, what the Police Department does, so this way, you know, they can ask questions. We have people coming in, in September, we're going to have the chief come for the first meeting, so this way he can explain and they can ask questions. So this way, you know, when they see a police officer, they don't have to, you know, what's going on, you know? It's, it's, I think it's fantastic for what they're doing.
Sounds really good.
And I thank everybody for doing it, because let me tell you, it's never been done before, and with these young people, you know, the council people, they're doing a fantastic job.
Keep them occupied.
Well, that's it, you know, there's a lot of things that they're planning, you know, different things in the wintertime too for them, at the Rec Department, they're talking to Sean. You know, if we can have one night a week that, or one night a month that they can come out and hang out, talk, you know, with everybody together. This way they have someplace to go, especially the young ones from sixth to eighth grade, they have no place to go. This way the high school, you know, they have a place to hang out, these kids don't have any place, but this way if you get them involved in things, it'd be fantastic for them. I'd like to thank the DPW for doing the, the street on Lee Street for the residents, they have put up two years' worth of trucks coming in and out and destroying their drive, you know, their roads. I want to thank them for that, too. Next is homeowners associations that have another bus ride on Friday, July the twenty-third. They're leaving the Rec Department at seven, at ten o'clock, they're returning at seven. The cost is forty dollars, but you're going to get a thirty-five dollar voucher back, please call Linda Calabini at two oh one, nine six six, seven six nine four for reservations. Thank you, progress.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have two items, I'm just going to piggyback and expound on Councilwoman Ballastiri's report about Tuesday evening, the concert. It wasn't a auspicious start to the series, but the rain had just done us out. At about four o'clock, we had to make a decision based on the forecast, which said it would be clear weather at seven thirty, and completely, they were completely, completely, completely wrong, and we were there until eight thirty, and it was still raining on our heads. So going forward, I spoke with Mike, I think whenever there is a question of the weather, we, we have a unique situation where our rec building's right there, and we have an auditorium in a sense, that we will just automatically bring it inside if there's a threat of inclement weather. Now, I know these are supposed to be outside concerts, but we don't want to happen what has happened this week.
It's done indoor in the past.
In the past, yeah. So are we all in agreement with that?
Yes.
It's better to have a show rather than no show. And I, you know, when you're making this decision, it's a tough decision, and you're basing it off of the Dobbler, and it's, you know, it can just come back and hit you in the face, which, which it did do. And another item that I know Mrs. Ballastiri works, on last Thursday, I visited the Strangers That Helped Strangers food giveaway.
Yes, my granddaughter's, the mayor's here.
Yeah. To my delight, they're at the Firehouse Number Four, they were giving away forty-pound boxes of food in the driving rain, and that, that, we were under a couple of tents there, and they weren't going anywhere, the volunteers were not going anywhere, it's a great program. Keep it up, you've got great people working there for you.
I'd like to say, and we have a lot of Garfield that come and help us, which is wonderful, that they come and help the Elmwood Park as well as doing their own.
Yeah, yeah, I met the, the one lady, she tell you, I forget her name.
Anna, maybe?
Aleah, probably.
Who am I, who am I thinking about?
There's Debbie, then.
I'll be Aleah.
Curly-haired mayor?
No, she wasn't, Brunette, she was a Brunette. In any case, very nice.
Yeah, they're all nice.
Yeah, very nice, and you can see these people are sincere, too, very, very nice, I was impressed on, on the whole operation.
Always there, no matter when it was cold weather, or going way back, it was freezing out, to, like I said, rain. They never back out.
I'm going to say my famous saying, stay, stay, stay the course. All right, that's all I have, so we're going to move along here now for opening the, the floor for public comment, may I have a motion on that, please? Anyone from the public here to speak on any item they'd like? If not, I will close the public portion. May I have a motion to enter into executive? All in favor? Thank you, good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas these public bodies have the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss personnel and litigation legal reports, minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.